It's a clock. Alright, uh, what's the meeting? Is the meeting being recorded? Yes.
Yeah, sorry, recording.
Alright, oh, it really disappeared on me this morning. Uh, motion to approve the meeting minutes of January eighth, twenty second and the twenty ninth as. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? On paper?
Alright.
Any audience participation?
Uh, eighth and twenty nine, how about the twenty second?
Oh, I, I think I got all eight, twenty second, twenty nine. This is very loud behind me, sorry. The heater is very loud. Any second now.
Very soon it will turn into.
Alright, um, sorry, just reading my email, I'll open back up. Uh, the highway department, calm down.
Hey.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very well done, man.
Thank you, well, that's alright.
A bunch of bullies.
Welcome.
Good evening.
For coming.
Thank you, proud.
Is it Leandro, is that right?
There you go, you nailed it, thank you. You didn't kill it.
I was thinking, um, Leonardo, right?
Right there, you got it.
We caught it.
So David, you had a chance to look over, what are your?
Yes, I've looked over all of them, matter of fact, I just got a phone call from, um, another superintendent and asked me if I was still looking, I says, yes, as I got, you know, three people already, so who's gonna, hopefully sometime tomorrow, he'll forward the, uh, the other gentleman's, um, application and all that, so.
Okay. Um, did you meet with James yet?
Yes.
I have questions for.
Yep.
Perfect.
It's all yours.
So, guys, do you have questions right off the bat? Just at the. I know, it was.
Well, I see you got a CBA now.
Yeah.
I mean, A and B, which is good, yeah, you got a hydraulics?
Uh, I got one C, I, uh, voice and license, which I can drive. I was in Forest Street, I started off in Highway Department, Ch- City of Chicagabeen, then I prom- I, like promoted myself and went to the Department of Forest Street. So you see the boom truck that's off front parked out there?
Yeah.
I went to go get my one C, so I'm able to go up four or five stories high, although that truck's much, arms, the arms much longer to go up higher versus the one that's up front. But anyway, yes, I dig my one C, I am working on getting more license myself too. So I'm gonna make myself stronger and the community stronger too, so, more knowledge.
There we go.
You weren't kidding.
Yeah. The right be on their ear too. Okay, um.
I also have my tanker endorsement. I used to have my hazmat before that too. I've driven different types of vehicles. Let me try, you know, your, your tractor trailer to your, uh, dump trucks, roll-off trucks for dumpsters. You guys ever had that down the road, if you guys wanted to have sanitation department or something like that? You know, I, my, my license is very universal, I'm the utility guy in the bunch. I'm not afraid to drive different things or get dirty for that matter either.
Fantastic. Um, tell us a little bit why you're interested in the position?
Uh, well, the way I look at it is, I, I left Chicagabeen for, for certain reasons, and one of the reasons was there's a back wall behind guys that would have seniority or been there for quite a long time to jump into certain equipments. So the way I look at a small community like this, I grew up in Londo, we were small at one point, now we're grim, you know, they've grown pretty good size now, but the old timers are telling me, no offense to anybody, but, you know, said that, you know, if you could find smaller like towns, you're able to use the equipment, learn how to do things much quicker, then you'll be more advanced for other positions in other towns if I wanted to leave or promote within, because I would like to stay if I was gonna do this, if there's opportunities down the road.
Yeah.
And I know it's a small community, I know it's a very budget community also too on everything you guys do. So I, I understand that end though, so.
Yeah.
So that's the reason why I figured, I saw it, gave it a shot. From Londo all the way to here, it's about thirty-three minutes, it's all mostly Mass Pike and then, you know, little semi-highway, you might call it, so. And it's a piece of cake, can, am I gonna run into traffic during the summer? Absolutely, who doesn't on Mass Pike?
Yeah.
So.
Being angry, being fast.
Yes, sure that, you guys have the rest areas.
You take your chance, you can get off sometimes, but they take your picture.
Yeah, the chance you take.
Yeah.
Hey, I don't think the camera works, my picture's been taken so many times.
Good to know.
Well, I'm worried, go there. Hey.
Go ahead.
We're surrounded. Yes.
Yeah, enough of that.
Yeah.
Just, just so you know, that the gate across from the maintenance center is usually open from six until three.
Good to know, honestly, good to know. I like that.
Case of Americans.
So we don't pay mail.
Yeah, or toll.
Or toll, yeah. Or legal fees, like you said, you know?
How, how long have you had to, you know, CDL?
I got it in two thousand and five, uh, in the summer.
Okay.
My daughter was just born. And so I figured I was able to, I was unemployed during the time too, so I went to talk to counselor and I was able to get Brent money and go to Tri-State. It was still relocated in Holyoke, then went to Springfield, I think they sold it or they're not, not around anymore, I don't know that a hundred percent. So I've had it for now going on nineteen years, so. And I, you could check my driving record, spotless, I had, I had a heavy foot, I had a lot of speeding tickets when I was in my twenties.
Yeah.
My little fast cars, but when you get older.
Geez, we'll have to compare our looks.
Yeah, well, we could do that someday.
I drove eighteen for fifty years, so.
Gotcha.
They were the ones you had to crank to start.
Yeah.
Alright, sorry.
No, you're not.
No, I'm really not.
You guys are out of control. I know, I know.
It's the weather, saw the sun for two days, what do you expect?
I have a three minutes today.
Yes, I agree with the sun, I was.
Um, do you have any experience, uh, working for Chigbee with dirt roads, or is this?
I've done, we've done dirt roads, we've done paving jobs, uh, patch, potholes, which probably gonna get a lot of complaints with potholes, it's time of the year coming up, you know, stuff like that, digging holes, putting man covers, you know, drainage, you know, pipe stuff first to go help the water department, you know, because Chicagbeen has several outfits, sanitation, the water department, you know, all that stuff, so we all would help each other out as best we can. Because unfortunately, it seems like across the United States pretty much, a lot of the city and town jobs are not as popular as they were before.
Yeah.
And that's because also for reasons, probably because of money and, and stuff like that too, so. Or maybe the generations, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I'm trying to politically correct you on our video, so.
Yeah, they're not as appealing for some reason, yeah, there's a lot of them.
Lot of jobs.
I also, I, I also did the, the plowing and, uh, sanding of cities of Chicagbeen also, so I'm not afraid to go out in the winter.
Okay.
So, I know that's part of the job.
Yeah.
That's where a lot of guys don't like doing that.
Yeah.
But I know that.
We usually do get, when the weather is warmer down the hill, we usually put a bit colder, we get a bit more snow on ice.
I noticed that.
Yeah. There's sort of an ice line that, you're worried about man's bets.
Yeah.
And then you come up the hill and this, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. Um, do you guys have more questions? It sounds like we have one more applicant to look at before we make
Yeah.
a decision, okay?
I'll let you, I'll, I'll let you know tomorrow or Wednesday, if I get that application.
Okay, and then we're filling two positions.
I want to be here next week.
Jeff, break my heart.
Gonna do more than that.
Oh, you gotta pay my bills, alright.
I can't pay my own, what about yours, Val?
So, um, do you have any questions?
I, the only question that was down, I don't know, and this was kind of like an interview process too, I've never had this done before, I've seen that TV. You know, I can add that to my list of interviews, you know, something like that, but, uh, what's like the deadline for this, for this position to get filled by the two people, don't have any idea yet?
No.
Okay, just that's why I was asking.
We should, I would say that we should, probably we have some information in the next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so you guys know, I am gonna also continue, uh, doing interviews also.
Oh, yes.
Westfield just knocked on my door, um, so you guys know.
Okay.
And I'm going on other interviews, but I am very interested, I wanna
Okay.
you know, discourage you guys to not give it out, you have any either, because that's not what I'm trying to do either, either.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I think that we, I mean, we would like to fill the positions.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I would say sometime after next Monday.
Yes.
Be able to start to reach out.
Yeah.
Alright, so you're currently not working?
No, right, well, I currently am working, I'm working for a buddy of mine that was a machine shop in the, you know, in New York, you're part of Springfield.
Okay.
Um, I do deliveries for him, for some clients and stuff, but, uh, no, otherwise, I, I, I was, a couple months ago too, someone, a family member of mine needed some medical like help, so I was able to, to, you know, help with that, although my parents both retired and moved to Florida a couple years ago, I still have relatives around. Alright.
Alright, excellent.
Well, thank you.
It was nice meeting you all, all you guys.
Nice meeting you.
Hello, Brian.
So.
Thank you very much, I hope to hear from you guys. Yep.
Absolutely.
Alright, guys, everybody be safe.
Thank you, have a good night. What else do you have for us, Dave?
Oh, let's see. Jeff, have you got any information about number twenty-four, who's taking care of it?
Uh, the lady lives in New York City. And my brother's contacted, has contacted her.
Yeah.
He hasn't heard back.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I don't know, he, he, the best he's heard, I only met her once, a year ago, so.
Yeah, because I talked, I talked to the, um, post office today, and it's either his sister or brother.
His sister.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, but I, like I said, it's been probably ten years.
Alright, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna give the town of Russell a phone call down there, the, the post office, and see if they have any kind of contact number for that.
They don't have anything here?
No, because this is like a satellite place, they don't pass out information too often. You think?
Yeah, so, I'm just waiting for her to call my brother, so he, she can, can give her my number, so I can go over to you, but, I don't know how it works.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Um, the spoils haven't picked up from the spill already.
Okay.
So, um.
Refreshing on where it was.
Uh, Saw Barn. Yep.
Oh, that's, is that a some piece of equipment?
No, um.
Gas.
But yeah.
Diesel, yeah.
Oh, is it the wrong one there, dealer or something?
Uh, no, it was the, uh, nozzle stuck.
Oh.
Didn't, didn't, didn't click off. So that's already replaced on that. Um, I'm working on the Franklin County bids for the year. For material and a bunch of odds and ends, and it was very frustrating to try to save everything and you thought you saved it, you didn't save it, you did it four times, had to finish the whole thing out, you know? So, um, I talked to Gordon about grants.
Okay.
Okay, and Gordon is able to apply for Mass Works Grant.
Oh. For some of the new line?
For new lines, yes, so, the only thing it doesn't cover is the asphalt on top. But if he gets the grant, he can do, his plan is to do Russell Stage from the top all the way down to the last fire hydrant.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, yes.
I need more words. Talking about, um, enlarging the water.
Water line, replace, replacing the water line out front.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Russell Stage.
Stage, yeah, okay.
Down to what, the bridge?
No, the last fire hydrant on the left. Um, right, the, um, just.
Just above Spirit Road?
Uh, but just below Pat's house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Both, yeah.
Yeah.
And that would be upgrading it from the.
Well, what you have, eight inch, and and I told him, if you're gonna do this, you might as well do it right. You might as well put in more hydrants if you can, new shut-off, new everything, all the way down.
Dream big, right?
That's right.
How much is that?
Uh, forty-eight hundred.
Grant.
Yeah.
No quality.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, I think it was Mass something.
Mass Works.
Mass Works.
Yeah.
So he said he's gonna apply for it?
Yes, um. Mike and I have been working on the, um, beginnings of it, trying to get him as the, um, administrator on the website.
Okay.
That's a, is a frustrating part.
Yeah. Right, it's been times, yeah.
Yeah.
Dave, did you want to mention another grant, the one for Beach Hill Road Bridge?
Yeah, um, uh, yeah, I, I've already informed them about the other grants I'm applying for. Um, Beach Hill Grant, Russell, Russell Stage and Gore, okay? Um, they say we can apply for as many as we want to, doesn't mean you're gonna get all of them, but you know, if they can pick and choose, I'm happy with it, you know?
That one we submitted pre-contract documents. What you have Tuesday?
Yes.
Of what beach hill?
You know, the bridge, the bridge.
Bridge on Beach Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was the, uh, the pre-contract for that, that's, that's all taken care of right now. So we're good with that, we had, um, a Mass Works, um, Zoom meeting today, a briefing, I guess you wanna call it. Um, on tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, yeah. And we can start doing the, uh, expression, expression of interest on Friday. Which is gonna be good, you know, and then we have until, let's see, no, wrong book. Um, they, they, you can start applying for them, I believe it's May, and the last is June. Where the applications have to be in by.
Okay.
So. Um, and then, um, the mini escalator.
You, last time we talked, you were looking for bolts.
I've got bolts.
How many?
What?
How many bolts?
How many bolts? Two, three, four, five.
Okay.
Yeah, I was busy. It's just for budget purposes, we're still gonna have to go.
No, that, that, the, um, most of them are from, uh, Sourcewell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so refresh our memory about the need for the mini escalator.
The need, um, the one we have right now is no longer operable. Um, they said that it's unsafe to operate, unable to get parts for it, which would be the whole undercarriage on that. Um, so the need, the, the reason why we need to have one is because it helps us with the day-to-day work on ditches, culverts and all that stuff. Um, it's a very essential piece of equipment that we need to have. It's more maneuverable than it is a backhoe. Um, I, I have, matter of fact, of the five there, um, I've talked to them about, you know, can you bring one up? Well, we don't have one in stock, it'll be four, six weeks or whatever. Um, the one company, um, Quality Fleet, which has the largest fleet service in the area for equipment, they have over twenty-four trucks. Um, I, I asked them, says, hey, what's the possibility of, um, being one up here so we could see it? Yeah, you know, he goes, sure, when you want it. I says, bring it up. He brought it up, uh, Friday.
Okay.
And, um, the guys have been down in the yard, worked playing with it and all that stuff. Um, he also gave me a price to, um, rent it, was, I think it was forty-six hundred a month on that, so.
Um, so we're looking at, um, funding this from, what account did we talk about funding this out of?
Yeah, um, reserves, was it?
Yeah.
Free cash, there you go, thank you.
And was this part of our free cash, um, discussion, I know we had sort of like itemized free cash, did we?
I don't think so. I did, I, I did put this on for my, um, budget for this coming year.
Yeah.
And I was hoping and praying that it would last, yeah.
Um, sorry, I, one more question, with the old one, is there anything we can do? Can we turn it over for scrap, can we sell it?
Um. People wanna buy it, but I can't do it that way, so I'm gonna put it on municipal bid and sell it.
Get something.
Something, yeah.
It won't give, it won't give you a trade.
No.
Now, okay. Uh, quick question, on, on the John Deere. Uh, through the state, we're entitled to a twenty percent discount.
That's what they gave me.
That's what they gave me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would check back, it's, uh, when I was looking at Mowers, first, I'm a terrorist, I went to John Deere and, uh, and Pitsu.
Yeah.
And, uh,
Yeah.
they, they're the ones that informed me that they have a, a thing with the state and it's twenty percent discount.
Well.
Maybe it's in there?
The one, yeah, the one from PLT, um, Yanmar. Um, and if they are part of the state, that's a hundred and seven thousand dollars for that, for that piece of equipment.
Yeah.
You know, um, I'm, I'm also looking at the ability for, um, maintenance.
Yeah.
And then, then, then taking care of it. Um, that company there, Quality Fleet, um, they, they jumped through hoops for me. And I was quite impressed on what they wanted to do and this, that, and everything else on that.
I got Hyundai.
Which one?
Hyundai?
Yep.
You got, oh, it says with some bracket, but let them say it has.
Yeah, yes, it does.
Okay.
And, yeah, um, another thing about Hyundai is that the first bucket is free. The twenty-four, the twenty-four inch digging bucket, it's, it comes with it. Uh, most of me have to buy it, fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars, depending.
So that would be additional to what?
It would, it would have been, yeah.
Do you have a preferred quote there?
Uh, yes, I do.
Which?
Uh, Quality Fleet.
If they look at.
What's that?
We're, we're.
Uh, Belcher Town, I think, South Adelaide.
And that is the least.
Little world, so, yes.
Yeah. And is, is that the former Caterpillar place?
I have no idea.
No.
No idea.
Um, so I'm, what I'm trying to look at right now, I'm just looking at the, um, expenditure report, I'm just curious what we spent on a free cash this year, and then I wanted to look at what we had, um, broken that down, just to see if there's anything upcoming that um, we had already planned for ahead. Just wanna make sure before we go to spend money out of there.
One of those things you gotta think about is that roof leak and the repairs in there.
Yeah.
That, that's not gonna be.
There you go.
Well.
Yeah.
Was there any, any, any response on rental?
Um, the one did, Quality Fleet.
Quality, yeah.
Yep, um, the other ones, they don't really do that.
Yeah.
I mean.
And Quality is what machine, the Yanmar?
No, the Hun- Hyundai.
Yanmar?
Hyundai.
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 Hyundai, yeah. Um, you know, and of, of, out of the five, he's the one that reached out more often than anybody else did, you know?
Yeah.
Especially PLT, I, it took them like three weeks to give me a quote. Um, Bobcat and all of them were, you know, were there. But, um, I asked them about it, and oh, we can't do that, or we can do that, but it's gonna have to add more paperwork to the whole system and this, that, and everything else, so.
Now, is there any, um, like, Hyundai, I, I, I know very little about Yanmar and
Yeah.
the others, I'm very.
Yeah, Yanmar engine in it.
Pardon?
It's got a Yanmar engine in it.
I know. Am I supposed to be impressed or share, it's a Yanmar.
Yanmar, Yanmar.
Yanmar.
Yan, but yeah, um, that's the only one that I know of around here.
Yeah.
But they're silvers.
Yeah, and they, they are, they are coming around, um, there's a three-year, three thousand hour, um, warranty on it for the whole machine, so you can upgrade it to five-year, five thousand hours.
Did you know of anybody, any, man, one that has one?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, oh geez, you had to ask.
Of course I did, you, you should have known that was coming.
Um, I, I can't remember, it's, it's, it's a town probably not too far away from here. If you, if you wanna know, I'll, I'll get the name for you, but yeah, um, another town has one, and they're loving it.
Awesome.
Um, they also, they also starting to make a, um, a, a wheel deskevator also. Um, but that's in Europe right now, it's in the works to be coming over here in about a year.
So I think before we can vote on it, in, in my opinion, before I would wanna vote on it, I just wanna know what the mon- where the money in free cash has already been allocated and.
I think we had a sound warrant, let people vote for it, I don't think we should have had to like, spend that much money without asking them personally.
Um.
Why, why do you do that?
I mean, I think that I'd have to talk to, um, legal, but I think that in the, um, yearly town meeting, when we're voting on the free cash, the understanding is that the, um, responsibility is given to us for allocating that.
I want, I, I think we should find out exactly, like you said, where, how much free cash is already allocated and, uh.
I mean, it's not a matter of not needing the equipment.
No, it's not.
And it's not a matter of Dave not doing the labor to find prices.
Funding.
Clearly, and so if we have the funding available and we haven't allocated it elsewhere, I don't think it's a thing that needs to go.
We have to know exactly what, uh. Have to appropriate it at the town meeting.
I think.
No, no, free cash, that's, but not, we're not, we're not, we're not.
Okay.
We're going to be having a special town meeting for the library shortly anyway, so.
So we have to probably add a free cash specifically.
Yeah, that would be, I think, that's the best way to do it, but it needs to be appropriate, you know, it's, uh, it's an, at this point, it's an undesecrated fund balance.
Did your other equipment go through town?
Who, what?
I don't remember your other equipment that you bought going through town meeting.
What's that?
The second town meeting, beautiful town meeting.
The trucks were all grand.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that would be different. Yeah, I really forget.
Looking at a wrapper.
So, um, yeah, let's take a look at what's in free cash, um, there's, I'm sure that on Chris's computer, your computer, in Chris's spreadsheet, it would have said something about where we were thinking we would like to spend free cash, um, just take a look at that and then we can draw up the warrant article.
I, I think we should have somebody give us a price on looking at that roof and repairs. Does that, I'm gonna dress down a little bit, I'm gonna dress down a little, okay, but I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's leaking all over the place, we're gonna do a. I know that's hard for you.
It is.
That's that's what you usually are.
Um, so we'll touch back basically next week.
Let's just make sure we're doing it right.
Yes.
Yeah. Absolutely.
What else you got for us?
Um, beautiful sunshine.
Oh, it's been nice.
And a great, snow's melting slowly, slowly, slowly.
What snow?
Well.
Go north, I am.
Both both west coast California, you can do, um.
Land is shaking babe, no way.
Well, no, you ain't shaking, you're not there now, we're we're supposed to be getting a purchase of rain.
Wait for it to go over into the ocean.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Alright. Uh town administrator. Dave, do you want me to hold on to these?
Hey. Uh, yes, please.
Which means I'm gonna give them something. Oh, you're gonna keep on.
I'm gonna keep on, yes.
Oh, yeah.
You approved this previously, it was a request for support of budget amendment, uh for the D C.
Yes.
Request to say, uh I got a letter uh that's in the background, it's in front of you, if you wanna review it, you know, that's that was sent out to them.
Thank you.
Um, last week, you. Mentioned the the fact that we do not have a uh. Severe weather cancellation policy.
Yeah.
I made a draft and one, and it's had a draft sample, and that means this, it's for your review. I'd like you to read it over and tell me what you like, tell me if you hate it.
Okay.
Um, and I'll I'll make whatever choices uh to directly do.
Okay.
I modeled this on not, I only found three ums. That actually had them uh in written and uh. Something very similar to this was used in two of them, so I just. Edit it.
Thank you, yeah, I did, I read over that, um. Do you guys need more, do you need more time with it? My thought, my only thought was, um, and I think I emailed you back, that some of it might be. Not, some of it was maybe like more expensive than we knew it was, we looked at, but I can maybe take a look and see it. Do you want me to mark it up?
If you'd like.
Okay, that would be better, um. I might have to print it because it looks like it's in PDF, so I can't.
You should have it printed.
Oh, no, she know, I always get digital copies, I try to save a couple trees here and there, um but I'll take a a paper copy.
In favoring trees.
One of us has to.
Take mine. I don't have other.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
Uh I drafted and sent out a request for price proposals uh to three of the Vadar resellers on the Mass State contract I P S seventy five.
Okay.
Because that was required by the contract to actually get three different prices.
Okay.
Uh I've heard back from one, I doubt, and they are not particularly interested, so. I'll see what happens with the other two.
Okay.
Haven't heard from them yet. Uh. The roof leak by the gym, um I spoke to Maya about that and they sent out uh. And I I adjusted the cap at risk. Uh he was here on the thirty first of uh January.
Okay.
And examined the whole thing, I I hadn't gotten a report back, but you're aware of it, no. Uh they'll have an estimate and. Find out what was recovered for, I think we have a thousand dollars to drop technical or more, maybe two, I don't know.
Okay.
But this is one of the. Um. And finally, Maya has notified us. That the seven one twenty four increase for medical insurance is nine point nine five percent. Uh, no increase for dental. Uh they also said we're eligible for a point five percent discount on medical if we add vision insurance. I don't know.
So if we add.
If we bundle the medical with vision, we get a half a percent uh discount on medical, I don't know if that's true. So what's what's the, I didn't, insurance costs, five percent. The they said uh.
Yeah, might as well.
Yeah, of course, and I see, you know, who's not saving it, we spent our money, yeah. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it, um. Not the gentleman there, that's. Alright, um we have warrant fifteen um payroll, this is the one we signed already, is that correct, Joan?
That shouldn't be there. I'm losing my mind, I'm a loser.
Sorry.
But in my defense, it has been so inconsistent from them recently that I'm just like, I don't know what. What is signed when?
Okay, so sorry. Good, less work, I like that. Um, we have a draft letter to C D B G Senior Program Rep from Pioneer Valley Planning. Is this the email that was talking about the? Hold. Okay, I saw the email that was talking about the oversight from Pioneer Valley Planning. On the grants, and I know that we had oversight on the water grant. Is there old bars?
Oversight didn't seem to have any action component, it it the uh Pioneer Valley Planning uh. Manages those grants for us.
Okay.
Uh we don't have to do anything that uh actively, but for some reason, state is is chosen Blanford as uh. One of the grants, and they wanna look more closely at.
Okay.
I don't know the reason. Uh, it indicated that they uh they had something starting to live with the uh. With the management of I P P C, not with us.
Okay, okay. Um, so that is not affecting us in any way, right?
Uh not of, not now, but um. I'm certainly gonna monitor that and and make sure that uh it doesn't affect our brands.
Yeah, okay.
Can I interject?
Yes, go.
This. Um, I'm, the way I'm reading this, and I'm and I'm not sure, I was on the phone with them today. Um, because we had fifty nine thousand dollars left in with the grant money. And they weren't gonna let us use that.
Because of this oversight?
Because of the oversight, the oversight, according to speaking with Joe. Um and I argued this point with him today was um. That they had uh several people back out of the grant after they went and did all their. Their end work, so it cost them more money then.
Oh.
So, they were gonna take the fifty nine thousand, and I said, no. I said, that's really not right, because we have an emergency that we can use this money towards. So I guess what I'm asking is, in all of these other pages that they wrote, what is the bottom line that they want more money of?
To me, D V P C?
Yes, are they asking for sixteen thousand dollars more, are they asking for three thousand?
Whole amount due out of that, and this is for, um, we get these every week or so, Jennifer. So this is, um, I think specific to one of the projects. Is my understanding, so it's this, um. It's this, it's labor for one of the projects, hold on, let me re-read, sure.
So what they're actually doing is just saying where they spent the money that we've already put into.
Yeah, it looks like, so they have these hours. Offered for these people, Joseph, Christine, Shannon.
Okay, I get, I get it, I get what that is, okay. So they just today called back after we went round and about on this, and they granted us between thirty eight thousand and forty thousand. For a septic system.
Okay.
So, the one that we've been dealing with all along.
Yeah.
Main street, okay, so they've granted that, and they're gonna hold that money aside.
Mm hmm.
That they're not going to close the grant. Per se.
Okay.
Um, but I think they're gonna come back and request more money.
My understanding with this project is that it's been, it's. It's more complicated than we originally thought, for example, when they go into homes and if they find lead feet. Which they find often.
Right.
It becomes this like, they need to go back in and strip everything, or they're asking people to remove. Doors that are like older doors that people don't wanna remove, because you know, they're solid wood. Um and it's sort of maybe. Had that, I think that's one of the reasons people may have backed out or changed minds, because of all of the. Other components that are, you know, part of it, it becomes a little bit bigger of a project.
So that is what happened to the people with the septic system, they had, in the early stages of this grant.
Yeah.
Applied for, and they did that, so today in speaking with Joe, I had told, I had said, there's no reason. For them to do any lead, don't put any more cost on.
Yeah.
To anything, it has nothing to do with the septic system. He came back, him and Erica agreed, they're gonna move.
Oh, good.
And they, and.
Yeah.
I signed the emergency form for him today, and he's sending the other paperwork out to the homeowner. Either this afternoon, he was gonna do it, or tomorrow.
Okay, good one, so, good, well, thank you.
And it is a fight.
Um, so then I would make a motion to approve the draft letter. For the um community development building grant, senior program rep from Pioneer Valley Planning, is there? Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and as part of that, I'm wanting to approve the Pioneer Valley Planning invoice number thirty, housing community development.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and then we had the contract amendment. Which I think we had, you were saying we had already approved for, um, but it's just an extension for the shared water operator. Um services, it does not change the creative on total compensation at all. So this is just extends the um. The deadline to January first, twenty twenty four. From January ninth, twenty twenty three. Oh, wait, you might amend it affect it, sorry. Through June thirty of twenty twenty. Okay, so six months. Um, so motion to approve the contract amendment number one, technical assistant grant, shared water operator services.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we have new business, we have the expenditure report. Where's my? My gift, here we go. Um, it is February, so we're fifty eight percent. Finance committee, slow down. Fifteen dollars left. Treasures expenses a little bit lower, yeah. Just like four percent, but. It should be fifty eight. It's like sixty two, I'm looking at the treas. Oh, the um.
The tax.
The tax title legal fees. I think, I could be wrong, I think that's because it's when they do. The. Tax title seizure, it like happens all at once. But we should double check with them anyways. Mike, do you mind following up on that, the um tax title legal fee, they're at ninety percent?
Oh, yeah, so. Well, that's pretty required.
Yeah. Oh, it's treasure. Professional services, oh, okay, sorry, maybe we paid it out. I don't know, yeah, that is.
I'll I'll give you that support.
Thank you. Um. Ooh, town hall, well, we already knew that we already had to move money for that, so.
The money hasn't been moved yet?
Um.
Because they're not bouncing.
It says amended, it says there was eight thousand six hundred seventeen dollars amended.
Yeah, that was a long time ago, and I had eight thousand dollars worth of.
It's not over, it's at eighty five percent. We expended thirteen thousand four hundred thirteen dollars, and there's two thousand of, or about two thousand left.
Okay, thank you. Just bringing it forward to start bouncing things. I mean, the accounting department, when there's not enough money, they bounce it back.
They bounce it back, I miss it, doesn't say sounds like mine. Uh, ambulance.
None of us go with it.
Anyway, over the time. This is seventy two, equipment rental. Tree canopy work, we're gonna start moving on into the uh. The tree wardens, so um Mike, just to catch you up to date with this, um. We have a tree warden, he's an elected official, very nice human.
I I know.
You met Mark, oh, fantastic, he appeared, um, he's sort of the M I A. Um, we would like to use some of the funding from his accounts, and we plan to use some of the funding from his accounts. To do some tree canopy work with um the data's planned. Because we don't really get the information from Mark in terms of. Here's my plan for spending this money. And then it gets toward the end of the fiscal year, and suddenly, we're gonna spend the money, so we would like to allocate that to some of. Uh the projects that Dave has. Um and I reached out to him in December and asked him to contact Dave to have a conversation. Um with Dave about what Dave's plans were, I mean, he hasn't done so. Joan, do you have anything?
He just gave me two bills today, um nine thousand dollars for ash tree and seven thousand dollars for the other account, which is called. I forgot what it's called, his other account.
Okay, so bills, but no plan in advance. So that's the pro- the problem, Mark's great.
He he did say there were some ash trees that are infested, I'm not sure what.
We just would like to know the plan, so it becomes, it's complicated because it's an elected position, but we would really like for Mark to plan ahead of time. Sort of a bit of an outline as to what's plan is for that money for the year, so that. We know when we're voting that money in. Exactly what it's going for, and can we use some for for highway? Canopy work, because you can see, as you can see, highway canopy work is already at ninety seven percent. So we're gonna need to use some. And we would like um for for Mark to work with Dave. There.
So he's only got a lot of. Four thousand dollars, he's got the the play, what if we turn it in? Two bills, one for nine and one for seven.
Uh they're for two different accounts. Nine is for the ash account, seven is for the other one.
He's got, see, that's where it also gets complicated, he has the two different accounts.
Uh he also gave me another bill for detail. Um, to Sheriff's Department. And I asked him, don't we hire locally, and he said, well, if they're not available, he goes that way, it's that's five hundred dollars.
Um. Chief, do you know if um. Um the tree warden reached out to hire local for a detail.
Or we have a heading in contact with them, this not business.
Alright, other than that, the. Um. Budget looks good, so it's gonna be very far. Um. Building and maintenance. Um Jennifer left already, um, that just changed this year, so I I. Forget exactly what, do you remember, Joanne, what we changed for um board health, building and maintenance? Is that building maintenance just on the, just as a transfer station, right?
I don't know.
I know that we changed something, because something was. Odd, do you remember something was odd with the board health budget, and we made some adjustments last year to try to clarify it, Mary, Mary. Do you remember specifically?
I I remember going through that process, but I can't call the specific.
It is high, the building and maintenance is higher than it should be, so there could be. Um, Mike, you wanna reach out, their building, I mean, this is at eighty six percent, and just see. Um, because then they have the. They have transfer station expense, it's separate, so that's where it's confusing.
Yeah, the car can be next trucking and stuff.
Yeah.
That salaries, I get that, state and secretary, that's that.
So building and maintenance, it's gotta be, because there's only one building.
Well, second building. You can build that in one.
Uh things will build.
Oh, favorite. Move this.
Don't we vote in the dock?
No.
Um, alright, so then we have the uh the draft emergency closing, we talked about that, we're gonna review for next week. And the draft plan for C D X, so it's budget amendment. Is that what we talked about already, is this a new one?
Uh.
Is that what we talked about?
The.
Uh, it's five C.
What would be?
I think that that's what we just.
I think that's.
Yeah.
Okay. Try not to overlap ourselves.
And then I have um. A payroll expense classification for. A water department paid it in error, should be paid by town hall.
Yeah, that, uh, yeah. Poppy gave that bill to me, and I had my setup account for him advanced, because. Yeah, I don't know why, we needed a separate account when they already have one, and in the meantime, the bill came through and Karen just paid it.
Okay, but it's.
Poppy's names on it, and I connected with Janice, and she's gonna reverse it, so.
Okay. Okay, so she's the two hundred.
And this isn't something, this is something that has to come to you guys, or does the town administrator have authority to sign these things?
I would thank the town administrator, yeah.
I didn't know, I didn't ask him.
No, that's fine, yeah, thank you, especially for, I mean, just the two.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if you wanna assign. Dollar maximums.
For, so it would be for a reclassification?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, if it's a. Error that comes through from our accounting, I don't really have. What do you guys think, I don't really, if they find an error.
Have a limit, what you could sign for, but.
So do you wanna say up to a thousand dollars, or was that?
I think a couple, first.
Yeah, okay, sometimes inside of them.
No, at least.
Okay, yeah, up to, and I we don't need to vote on it, but up to a whole thousand, I think.
Yeah.
And you see, any one of us, we can always come on in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
If you have.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You can tell them, man.
No, I can't, there we go, there's no phone cell, and there's no, no nothing up there.
I'm wonderful, do we want a motion for that, or? I don't think so, okay.
Uh, just a quick question, we we received a complaint about the veterans.
Yes, I was gonna point that out, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. So we received a complaint about veterans.
To Dead River Oil Company.
Oh, yeah.
From, and the person I I know her well is Lynn.
So he was advocating for, um.
I don't love the person.
He was advocating that she not be charged fees.
Same day delivery fee, well, every oil company in the world has same day delivery fee, if they can't call three days ahead. He goes nuts on the person on the other end of the road.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it's great that he's advocating for the veterans, um but yeah, he definitely needs.
We have to have something for them.
Yes. Um yeah, so I don't know if we wanna. Reach out to Joe, what do you guys wanna do? Do you wanna just issue a letter that?
Something should be said, or say, we received a complaint. You acted like.
So we're just asking that you.
I mean, uh.
That's alright.
No, something should be said to them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Be careful, because it's, they're only following company policy.
That's right.
It's like, we we have certain things, they they have rules up there and you can't just, you can't avoid that stuff, you know?
Yeah, just in representing.
Exactly, and and it wasn't part of the city.
Not at all, that's pretty much procedure with any oil company, same day deliveries, like fifty or seventy-five bucks, I don't know what it is.
Do you think that's something you could draft first, like just in representing town of Blenford, who would prefer?
Absolutely, and rather something that, can I get a copy of the uh original complaint?
Yeah. I will, I keep thinking that this is touchscreen, I'll record it to you right now. Mad name.
Now, if you need a signature, I'll gladly sign it.
Alright, um.
Whatever you want.
We'll get it uh drafted and then we can um take a look at it next week and sign it and send it from the sector.
Yeah.
Okay, um glad to hear the plumbing inspector uh finally moved on those um. I did get a complaint slash request from a resident about uh having applied for permanent. Few weeks ago and there was nothing, moved on it, trying to get through, so Joanne was really helpful, um helped. Me to reach out to Aaron and push it along and it did get done that day, so.
Good.
Um so yeah, again. I don't know, do we write a formal? Wanna write a formal?
I already sent a note to him, it was something he really needs to pay attention to me, that's all he probably said in the last.
So maybe we should do a s- a a letter to um Aaron about just like. Be done in a time, being done in a time. Yes, um and then we can sign that the next, I just think at this point, because Joanne's comfortable with the plans now, the issues are. Yeah.
Yeah.
But like you go to the city, they send your comments right online, you gotta step hard enough to do that.
We have it online, that's supposed to be, but the point is that it should happen quicker than it is. Um so if we can just um drop something to him and then. I'm thinking that it should be done, I know he's not a full-time employee, but it should be something that can be done within five days.
I think, I think you got forty-eight hours.
Yeah, so within forty-eight hours.
Like when they call for inspection, you got forty-eight hours.
So then, yeah, so then if we request that he completely, or.
Yeah.
Within forty-eight hours, so, yeah. Okay, um chief, do you have anything for us? You're you're gracing us with your presence.
We only got two minutes, you're not.
Nope, I just wanted to hear what's going on.
Wanted to get a subtle one, alright.
Ah, you're all done, go, you should be home.
You got more?
No, I got, I got an answer for TJ.
Alright.
I tell you what, Wally Service is the quickest guy, uh South Valley, New Salem and Royalston each have one.
Oh, okay, I'm I'm doing.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um there is also um Holly and Lee, they also have um wheel excavators also.
Yeah.
So.
Mine, they're happy campers, I'm a happy camper.
Okay.
We don't know nothing in here.
Well, I don't remember tomorrow.
If you want, stop by tomorrow and we'll, I'll take you up to it to the yard and you can uh.
Oh, hey, I got an opening, I can use it.
Okay.
Alright.
The hell you stand? Not just cemetery either.
Oh, yeah, again.
No, you cannot.
Alright, um meeting adjourned six fifty-five.
Hang on.
Right, I'm gonna leave these here for next week. We're in mania, what's the time?
Terrible.
Terrible. We used to go to um.